Bill Kim's story, and I just completely forgot. Want to run them all?
No.
It's cold.
There is.
Is there anything?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Everybody all set?
Sure.
Can we get started?
Please.
Yes?
Please.
Okay, thank you. All right, good evening, everyone. And welcome to our joint meeting of our annual meeting of the school committee and city council.
Thanks.
Uh... I'm gonna call the meeting to order and yeah, we'll take attendance, starting with the city council, Jared Eigerman.
Here.
Uh, Council Zee.
Here.
Council Shan.
Here.
Council Manning. Council McCauley.
Here.
Council Wayne. Council Connell.
Here.
Council Khan.
Present.
Council Vogel.
Present.
Council Taunter. Council Devlin.
Present.
We definitely have a quorum of the city council, uh, school committee members. Uh, Brian Callahan.
Here.
Steve Cole.
Here.
Bruce Menon.
Here.
David Hawkeizer.
Here.
Sheila Spalding.
Here.
Sean Redden. Mayor Holliday here. All right, thank you. All right, let's start the meeting. Who's got the... Oh, did you want me to run the slides for you? No, I didn't. You're okay there, there? Yeah, yeah. All right. And, uh, good evening, oh, good evening, Christine.
Hello.
Good evening.
Council Manning is here. Uh, also would like to recognize our finance director, Ethan Manning, and superintendent of schools is here, as well as our business manager, Phil Littlehill, who is sitting right there next to Mr. Menon. Um, good evening, nice to have you with us. Okay, so, um, as some of you know, uh, this is, this joint meeting is mandated by our charter under section, uh, six two, the mayor shall call a joint meeting of the city council and school committee to include the superintendent of schools before the commencement of the annual budget process to review the financial condition of the city, revenue and expenditure forecast, and other relevant information prepared by the mayor in order to develop a coordinated budget. Next slide, Ethan. And so just to give a quick review, uh, as many of you know, our AAA bond ready was reaffirmed by Standard and Poor in May of 2021, and just some of the quick highlights of what they identified in our city is that we have a very strong economy, very strong management with strong financial policies and practices, strong budgetary performance, uh, revenue and expenses, strong budgetary flexibility, strong reserves, very strong liquidity, available cash, and four point seven times government debt service and access to external liquidity. We consider strong and relatively low debt burden, low overall net debt at less than three percent of market value with a strong institutional framework, score in overall government operation. And just this week, we received our tenth award for our budget distinctive budget presentation from the Government Finance Officers Association. All right, and to you, Ethan.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Uh, so this is our, our current general fund budget, uh, which we're all pretty familiar with. Um, the largest component naturally is education, uh, with the school budget comprised of forty eight, forty-four point eight percent. And when you roll in the benefits for the school staff and teachers, as well as school debt service and the vocational schools, uh, it adds up to fifty-nine point seven percent, uh, of the general, general fund budget, uh, followed by public safety. A quick look at the general fund revenue sources. Um, so when I say general fund, uh, that's the main funding source for, for city operations, but of course, there's the enterprise funds for, for our utilities, uh, in the city. So naturally, property taxes, uh, the largest, uh, revenue source for the city, which for cities and towns and masses, it's a, it's a, it's a very stable and predict, predictable revenue source, uh, whereas the more volatile revenue sources, uh, we'll see in the local excise taxes, like the motor vehicle, the meal, the rooms, uh, licenses and permits, parking revenue, uh, and that type of thing. Uh, one, one thing that's really come, come into play, um, into focus, I should say, with, since the pandemic, it's federal aid, um, as we've seen the CARES Act roll out, uh, the various ESER grants that have come through all the federal legislation, um, ARPA, the American Rescue Plan Act, um, of which the city will receive a direct allocation of five and a half million, uh, followed by competitive grant opportunities, uh, based on the various pools of funding. Uh, and of course, the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, uh, which is pretty much being doled out to the states. Uh, so we'll be seeing how, you know, that works out in terms of any direct aid that's going to the municipalities, combined with, uh, the competitive grant opportunities, uh, they'll definitely be out there. Our reserve balances, we, we continue to, to maintain reserves within the city's policy target range of eight to ten percent. Uh, the one year where we did dip, of course, was in FY twenty, uh, where we did not make an appropriation to the stabilization trust fund, uh, because of the ongoing pandemic. And at that point in time, we just really didn't know where it was gonna take us as far as city revenue goes. So outstanding debt, uh, this was as of the end of the fiscal year. Uh, so the pie over on the left, that's all the, the debt that's currently out there within the city, uh, ninety-two point nine million, uh, the largest of which are the water and sewer utilities, uh, followed by the, the Brezner Hand and the Knack-Mullin School projects. Um, so really, the, the only part of that pie that'll be, uh, kinda going away soon is, is the high school renovation, which rolls off in the next two fiscal years. Um, and then the rest is kinda out there through twenty thirty-five to twenty thirty-eight. Um, and then, of course, that little slide, that little pie, uh, piece of the pie labeled as ordinary debt. So that's the debt that's issued within the, the tax levy, uh, where we're not going out to the voters and asking for a debt exclusion. Uh, and you can see how it pans out there. Uh, most of these are, are newer issuances, so they'll be on the books for at least fifteen to twenty years. Uh, this slide is a little busy, um, and I will mention, uh, Council Khan noted that, that these slides are on the event page on the city website, um, so if you wanna really drill down on any of this, um, I'd urge you to pull those up. Um, but really, what I'm trying to show here is, uh, so the, the gray, the dark black, um, section there, so that's what I'm calling the projected budget capacity. So that's how much debt service we could potentially afford based on our forecasting within the general fund. Uh, and then, of course, the bars on the right are all the different projects we've been talking about in terms of potentially needing to borrow, uh, over the next, uh, several years. So kind of at the bottom are the ones that have already been authorized and are kinda well underway, uh, in terms of Phillips Drive Station Two, uh, the roads and sidewalks, um, was authorized at one point two million dollars over five years, as we know. Uh, and then it kinda stacks up from there, um, based on the capital improvement plan. Uh, so really, what this is saying, it is that if we, as a city, uh, would like to take on all these different, these great projects, uh, we're going to have to be thinking about how to close the gap. In other words, looking at different funding sources, uh, i.e. some of the federal aid we talked about, uh, or whether or not there might be a project that makes sense to go out to the voters, um, you know, such as the high school science wing addition in the roof, um, which would be a very common thing to go out for a debt exclusion on.
Sure.
So what is the projected budget capacity? So that's based on your projections of revenue. What's your assumptions for, uh, you know, the, the property tax percentage?
Yes, so the, well, I'll talk about the forecasting in a little bit.
Okay.
But yes, that's based on taxing up to the maximum levy, levy limit.
Okay, so those, those darker bars are taxing up to the limit?
Yeah, and really how it's calculated is, it's calculated as two percent of, of annual revenue, um, which I'll talk about when I talk about the assumptions that are used in the modeling. So then I, I couldn't talk about debt without mentioning our other major liabilities, uh, which of course are the, the pension plan, uh, which currently any full-time employee is eligible to participate. Um, so this plan is for all city employees plus, um, staff within the school district that does not fall within the teacher's retirement system, uh, which is a, a state-run system, which has nothing to do with this liability you see here. Uh, so currently, our pension liability, our, our unfunded liability is forty-eight point two million, which works out to a funding ratio of sixty-four point nine percent, which is scheduled to be paid off in FY thirty-nine. And then the other liability, um, that's kinda come into focus over the past decade is the other post-employment benefits. So what, so that's retiree healthcare is really what that's talking about. Uh, and currently, that unfunded liability, um, as of June thirtieth, is ninety-five point six million, which is scheduled to be paid off in FY fifty-one. Um, and I could talk a lot more about this, but I won't. Uh, so ba- basically, the, the, what's going on beside, behind the scenes here is we have our pension liability that's getting paid off in the budget each year. Uh, it goes up five million dollars, uh, up five percent each year. Um, it's roughly five million dollars a year. Um, so once that obligation is paid off, presumably in FY thirty-nine, that funding would then get diverted to OPEB, which allowed that to then get paid down, uh, by FY fifty-one. Uh, again, all based on, you know, big assumptions. Okay, so now I'm gonna get more into the forecasting. Um, I want to touch on some budget pressures that we're seeing. And a lot of these are, you know, carryovers from past years. Um, of course, labor, the work, workforce, uh, collective bargaining, that's, you know, a very big part of the budget. It will always be a budget pressure. Uh, pension, health insurance, it's, you know, large cost for the city, so a small, you know, change in our experience there can have a huge impact on the budget. Uh, the variability of solid waste disposal costs, unfunded mandates, especially on the school side. Um, of course, inflation, we're, you know, kind of in the throes of it right now. You know, whether it'll be a temporary thing or a more long-term event, I think we're still kinda waiting to see how that plays out and the impact on the pricing to procure goods and services for the city. Um, and then I won't really get into the capital, it's kinda, you know, self-evident, all the, um, different projects that might be on the horizon, uh, and that we're talking about as a city. So the five-year forecast, um, is based on Proposition Two and a Half, so going up to the full, you know, levy limit that we're allowed to by law, uh, with some, some exceptions. Uh, and then conservative revenue estimates for our local receipts. Um, so those are, you know, the fees that we're collecting other than property taxes, our licenses, our permits, et cetera. Um, and then state aid and any other available funds. Um, and it's really looking to make sure that we can maintain our existing services um, and deal with any inflationary pressures, um, that arise from year to year. And of course, it, it attempts to adhere to our financial policies and not using free cash to fund the budget, maintaining strong reserve, uh, balances, and continuing to make investments in our capital improvement plan. So the major assumptions behind it, it's basically tied to, uh, the employment cost index and the consumer price index, uh, so the employment for labor and then CPI for any goods or services. Uh, health insurance costs, we're assuming, go up four percent each year. The pension assessment, based on the funding schedule, automatically goes up five percent each year. Um, we talked about Proposition Two and a Half. Um, we assume that the school appropriation is tied to the annual rev, annual, uh, growth rate for the city, which historically is anywhere from three to four percent. So, uh, you'll see when I show the forecast, it basically just trends, uh, with, with the revenue growth for the city. Uh, and then lastly, um, debt service within the levy is equal to two percent of what we're forecasting for annual revenue in any given year. So health insurance costs, um, I mentioned this because if, if we go out to the market as we do each year, um, you know, even a, a point five percent change can really blow this whole projection out of the water, um, where it's thirteen point eight percent of expenditures. Um, so in the current forecast, um, where we're, you know, seeing a kind of a challenging renewal on the horizon, we're assuming a five percent increase for FY twenty-three and then four percent in the out years. Uh, and I would just note in that OPEB, uh, number that I cited, that assumes a four point four and a half percent, uh, annual growth in health insurance costs. And just a quick note, um, during the current year, Maya offered what is known as, what they called a premium holiday. So basically, the employees in the city didn't need to pay health insurance premiums, uh, for one month, uh, so of, of which we set aside fifty percent, um, to kind of put in the bank for next year, 'cause we'll need to make up that month, of course. So here's the, the revenue forecast, and you can see the growth rates that are used for all the local receipt buckets on the side. Um, it's assuming that we're going up to the full tax levy unless there, unless it's noted uh, as a negative in the excess levy capacity line. Um... So I mean, so this is what we're currently working with. We, we're assuming that next state aid is going up three percent, um, which kind of is trending with historical state revenue growth over the past several years. Um, then, of course, on the expense side, um, kind of operating sectors up at the top. Um, those are really just indexed, um, looking at, uh, and then, of course, the public schools, those are, that's tied to the annual growth rate, which for FY twenty-three, we're, we're projecting three and a half percent. Um, and then three percent for the vocational schools each year. And that's the, uh, forecast, and I'll turn it over for an update on the schools.
All right. Thank you. Do you have any questions? Do you have any questions before we move on?
What do you wanna do, Mayor? It's totally up to you, Ethan. Yeah, n- now it's good. Sure.
What, um, so in terms of home assessments, have you taken that into account? Because I know that a lot of people are seeing increases in their assessments this year.
Mm-huh.
And it's, it's troublesome, because a lot of people's tax rates are, taxes are going up by hundreds of dollars. So have you taken those numbers into account when you look at the full budget?
Yeah.
Yes, so, yeah.
We actually had quite a debate today about, about this. Um, because, you know, when we're looking at going up to, we, I have tried over the last many years not to raise to the full two and a half percent. And so we've been re, going about, you know, one point seven five, but that still, doing that brings us up to a four point four percent increase. And when you look at assessments that are rising on each, this, the average single-family home now in Newburyport is worth seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So the, uh, Jill Brennan, our assessor, just released all of the assessments as required and specific letters to all the Plum Island residents, that was also required by the state, in terms of their assessments. She's received only ten calls, because people are pleased that the value of their home is going up, but what they really wanna know is what does that mean in terms of our, uh, individual taxes? So, uh, we've been sort of working those numbers at this point, because they have to go before the council on the twenty-ninth, and the vote has to be approved by the thirteenth of December, their last meeting. And so we're trying to figure out, you know, what is the revenue we need to be able to support the budget and the needs, but how do we find that sort of medium where we're not giving a, a huge increase to staffs, uh, to residents? So the final, what did we talk, sixty, what did we say the final increase might be?
To the, to the, so the assessments are going up nine and a half percent overall.
Right.
On the residential side. Um, so that equates to a tax bill going up, um, at roughly around four percent.
Right, and the, the concern is, is if we don't go to the full two and a half percent, and we, uh, will use free cash and, well, we'll, we actually figured out a way not to use free cash to make up that gap if we don't go to the full two and a half percent, 'cause we do have some levy limit there. Um, is that assessments were gonna continue to rise through next year, and that that would be a sh, uh, even bigger hit to residents if we don't mitigate it somewhat this year.
Right.
If we try to keep it too low this year, then it's gonna be a huge hit the following year. So we're trying to find that balance. Good question.
Yeah, that's a big, I mean, that's a big concern. I've talked to a number of residents that are just like, they can't afford anymore, a huge increase in taxes, or they're gonna have to leave. And that's a big concern aboard Six, so...
Council Khan?
Yeah, Ethan, uh, I didn't see, maybe it was embedded in those colorful strips, uh, and, and not visible to me. Uh, any evidence that we're planning for, uh, for, uh, climate mitigation? Uh, I know that there are some things that are on the, on the water department's side, uh, protecting the artichoke, and maybe that would fall within their rate base, but I don't know. Um, likewise, we have to protect the downtown from a surge through the storm drain system. We have to protect the industrial, uh, park, the Dexter Industrial Green, from flooding back up through their swale system. Um, is that anywhere in your forecasting?
Uh, so I did not include anything particular to water and sewer.
Yeah.
But of course, the drainage, um, and that, and those improvements come into play here. Um, so yeah, you're right, in, in this, really, the only components would be perhaps the bulkhead project
Mm-huh.
And how it plays into the old market mending park project. Um...
But I think that what we've been talking, we've only had one, uh, meeting with the ARPA ad hoc group.
Yeah.
But that's really where, because the infrastructure money, that the one point, the trillion that just dropped, there is money for water and sewer, there's money for C F, CSOs. The climate mayor's really reviewed some of the language regarding water and sewer in that infrastructure bill and with what the state just passed. Now, the House just passed their version, so now we need them to come together and come up with a, a green applaud and p, plan the governor can sign, and then we'll start to see that money released. That's where we're really gonna focus, uh, or I would anticipate. The next administration and the council will be focusing on, you know, I can't emphasize enough how we've got to use that, that one-time money for water. It's really, really critical.
And we had that discussion, uh, several months ago.
Yeah.
Um, but I, but I, I'm wondering where that works into the forecasting, because I don't want us to walk out of here saying, gee, we have more capacity than we really do, because there are these other obligations, uh, that are gonna come due at some point in the next five years. And we should put that into the planning, that's all.
Okay. Council Devlin?
Yeah, so the last couple of years, we have seen some iteration of a slide about the rise in the healthcare and how it's endangering us. And, and what did you say you used, you used five percent increase?
Yes, for FY twenty-three.
So I'm looking at fiscal year actual two thousand and nineteen to fiscal year two thousand and twenty actual, and doing the rough math, it went from, uh, it, it went up two point seven percent. And then it actually, from two thousand and twenty to fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one, it went down about, you know, two hundred, roughly, you know, uh, went down about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, so we've got at least three years where it only went up two point seven percent, and then it went down. So why are we predicting that it's gonna go up five percent this year?
Yeah, so if you look at the, the past few years, um, there's a lot of noise in that, because... So for the current year, we had the premium holiday. The year before that, they gave a partial premium holiday, so it was basically half of a month. So that's why it looks like, um, FY twenty-one went down compared to twenty. However, if you looked at it on a gross basis, the, it, it would've gone up had, had they not given that credit, because people weren't, you know, using the healthcare system.
I actually thought that about two years ago, that was a discussion we had as well. We were getting those, those, uh, um, those bonuses as well. So, I mean, I think if we went back fiscal year two thousand and eighteen and fiscal year two thousand and seventeen, are we seeing, you know, why, why wouldn't that be our barometer?
Yeah, I, I think if you look at, uh, what, I mean, what the actuaries are using, you know, for the next five to ten years, um, it's definitely closer to the four to five, five percent range.
So you don't expect to get any of the premium holidays?
Right, I, I think, I think the premium holidays are done.
Mm-huh.
People have started, you know, using the healthcare, you know, system a, a lot. Um, the city's exposure, uh, experience, you know, is, is okay, it's not that great.
It never has been, and that's what causes our rates to go up. They did project a nine percent increase, but that's, I don't think we're gonna see that.
Yeah, I think, I think the one year we had, had the lower percentage increase, there were some plan modifications, uh, which are great, but you can only make so many modifications. It was up without having to go to like the high deductible, um, plan. Uh, so really, it's working, you know, with the PEC to try and, you know, come to a happy medium for something that works for the employees, but also works, you know, for the taxpayers.
Would you be able to send me something going back to maybe two thousand and twelve?
Sure, yeah, I, I agree.
That same, that same comparison?
Yeah.
Okay, I get it.
The one thing that would help us a lot on health insurance is if we could get the PAC two agree to shift the cost for the, uh, PPO. Um, it costs us a lot more money, and it's the same seventy-five, twenty-five split, and we've never been able to get the PAC to move to make that change. And that would help so much if we could get that change.
Uh, Council President?
Yeah, I just had a question on the, um, uh, revenue slide. It, just free cash, so, um, what are you assuming that we carry in, in free cash? We've, we've done pretty well in recent years. I, you know, we just got certified a couple weeks ago at two point seven million. Just trying to understand what percentage you're targeting and what you're, what's desirable and what are you forecasting?
So what we're, based on the fact that we're u, we're using more conservative estimates, we're not forecasting material additions to free cash. Um, I mean, the goal of the forecast is, is really more to, to break even, um, if you kinda look at the bottom.
Mm-huh.
I mean, in the end, um, you know, do we use all of what the city council approves? No, we typically use, you know, ninety-eight, ninety-nine percent, so there's always that turnback there. And then, you know, hopefully, we're, we're beating our revenue estimate, um, to kinda replenish the, the free cash balance each year. Uh, but no, we're not, we're not really targeting a, a specific balance each year. Uh, the, the financial policies, um, you know, target one percent of the tax levy, um, so which is, um, you know, six hundred, six hundred fifty thousand at a minimum. Um, so that's kinda the baseline.
Got it, thank you.
Council Zee?
Can I just ask you a couple questions? So one is on slide ten, um, under OPEB, there's a one million dollar planned assets balance. What is the source for planned assets for, for OPEB? Where, where did the million dollars come from?
So that came from a number of appropriations over the years, the largest of which was the, um, the settlement.
For the gas, for the, the contamination of the gas.
The MTVE or whatever it was.
Where, yeah.
Yeah, and that, I wanna say it was four hundred and fifty thousand?
I think it was over five hundred, but we, we put a little bit toward, the council voted to put some of it somewhere else, and then we were able to transfer some money into... and then we were able to transfer some money into that to try and begin to address our OPEB, OPEB liability.
So should we expect to see, do, do you want to build that number up? That planned assets number up, or is it more of a focus of keeping, just pay, put money in and go right out the door as opposed to building an asset base for that?
I think to the extent that we can make, um, additions each year, albeit sixty thousand and a hundred thousand would be nice. Um, you see some towns that are doing, you know, one percent of their annual health insurance costs, which I don't think that's feasible for the city. Um, and it's really driven by mass general law, which forces us to deal with the pension liability before we deal with the OPEB liability. So, once you deal with pension liability, you can then, you know, put more, you know, funding into the OPEB liability.
All right, thank you, that helps. Um, second question is, um, is, is, is the pension cash flow positive in terms of what it has to pay out versus what the ninety million dollars generates every year?
So, no, not, not, not entirely. Um, so eventually, the idea is that once we're all, um, once all the employees are on the, the nine plus two, so the eleven percent of your salary is going into the, the pension, the idea is that at that point, it'll be self-funded. Uh, but until we get to that point, um, there, there's a good percent of the population that's still in the lower contribution rates, uh, which have generated this, this pension liability. Um, so it, it, it'll take time.
Okay, just, just two last ones. So on slide fourteen, you said debt service, that's the target of the two percent in the last, but I'm not connecting how that last bullet point works with the final slide on the expenditure line, because they seem to be fairly, see the capital outlay there, you're just growing it by two and a half percent, and then debt service seems to be tracking maybe something else, maybe it's what you expect to roll off at some point. So how does the two percent, uh, go with, where am I missing it?
Yeah, so the, um, so the two percent is the, the, what, what I label is city debt service. So the one point four seven five million in FY twenty-three, if you calculate it, that would be two percent of the revenue that's on the prior page, and then the one point five, one point five eight, et cetera. So that's just two percent of revenue, um.
So in other words, you're saying you're gonna add about five hundred thousand dollars to the, to the, to the capital debt service between this fiscal year and next, for go from nine sixty-two to one fifty? I'm just rounding, but.
Yeah, and I mean, this is really for discussion purposes, and it's something we've talked quite a bit during the capital plan, um, of how, you know, debt has rolled off over the years, but we really haven't, you know, replenished it with new debt. Um, so, you know, historically, if you look back, you know, fifteen, twenty years ago, we're closer to, you know, two to three percent of, of the annual budget going to debt service, whereas now it's, it's dropped off, you know, closer to one percent.
But in other words, so adding five hundred about gives you, frees up another five million dollars of debt cap or so that you can spend on whatever, but it's a relatively one-time hit, because then you're fairly flat thereafter. You're keeping it at two percent of the growth year over year. So you, you're opening about five million dollars of debt you could take on, is what you're saying?
Yeah, so eventually, once everything's issued, you're just waiting for debt to roll off, to issue new debt, yeah.
Last question is, um, so the schools, you're, you're saying here, you basically are tracking them at the growth, the three and a half. So can we, can we ever look at, say, three or four scenarios of these two sheets where we game out the schools at five percent and see how the rest of it breaks? Because you know it's gonna break. You, you're already tight here. You can see your numbers at the bottom are very shallow, right? Five grand, fifty-two hundred bucks. So how do you, we need to be able to see three or four scenarios where we bump up this and we reduce that, so we can figure out what, you know what I mean? So we can see what sort of the long term looks like and, and see it, and to Counselor Lane's question, you know, see how that impacts the two and a half. I just, we're gonna probably talk about this on Thursday with the taxes, but the range you're probably talking about is, for an average tax bill is fairly small. Even if you were to bump down the two and a half, all the way down, the, the difference in the average tax bill is gonna work out to be several hundred dollars, let's say. So that's why this is really where the taxes are set, not so much in setting the rate at the end of the process.
Exactly.
So, because assessments are going up, the levy's gonna stay the same, the rate's gonna change, and then we're gonna have to, you know, see what I'm saying? So you're at the end of the process. This is where, if you really want to have an impact on the taxes, this is where you have to be early on. Otherwise, you've already, you're already too far down the pipe.
Exactly, yeah, once you approve the, the expenditures, then you've got to.
You have to fund them, yeah. All right, I'm all set, thank you so much.
Superintendent Yelich.
Well, first of all, thanks for having us here tonight, and let's introduce some of my team members in the back there. We have Lisa Perlong, Director of Communication and Structural Technology. We have Nancy Koz, Special Education Services. Assistant Superintendent Ippolito is back there. And our new Business Manager Phil Little Hale is right here with his name tag, and I don't have one, so. That's an expenditure of a dollar ninety-nine. All right. So, um, as we look at the school budget, um, we're breaking this down, and I think as part of our, um, strategic planning focus group, you know, we talked about our number one asset that we invest is our people. Um, and so you can see in the operational budget, seventy-two percent roughly is going into salaries of over four hundred and thirty employees. Uh, that includes our teachers, our support staff, um, that, to run the school system. And then you can see how it breaks down after that, special ed, non-salaried, some fixed costs, maintenance, miscellaneous expenses, which would be textbook supplies, et cetera. Our revenue sources that come into, uh, the schools, um, and, and you have that list in front of you, but city allocations, choice tuition, um, so we're anticipating, uh, this is a three hundred and six thousand coming in. Choice utilized, which is we're forecasting the expenditures as we, uh, budget for next year, around eight hundred or nine hundred thousand. Uh, our circuit breaker, um, that's our reimbursement from special education. Our athletics, uh, user fees that come into the district, transportation, um, that comes into the district. Our kindergarten tuition, our preschool tuition, our Title One grant, um, that we apply for every year. Uh, our I D A, which is our special education grants that come in every year, and then the totals of all of the revenue resources, which includes those grants. Other state and, uh, federal grants, um, that we've talked about in the past, our early childhood and special education grants that, uh, come in, uh, improved education, so that's Title Two A grant, a Title Four grant that comes in from the state. Our enhanced health services, uh, this is, you know, prior was Kathy Ricchio writing these grants, and now our new, uh, nurse leader, Lauren McDonald, um, for the health services for the district. COVID relief, which was that one-time, uh, payment at the beginning of the pandemic. Our S R one, which was that first year of the pandemic. Uh, S R two, um, is the expense for this year, and we have a couple slides that'll go that kind of breaks that up. And now the new S R three, which is a three-year grant, uh, total. Um, we have a hurricane relief fund as we went back to two thousand and nineteen. Um, that was a grant of four thousand dollars in our, um, ed, tech ed remote learning, um, grant. So those are all of the grants, there are federal and state grants that are coming to the district, and then our private grants, as you all know, some great organizations, the Swayze Fund, um, which is projected at a hundred and ninety-three thousand in our N E F, uh, Fund at two twenty-four. So as you all know, for all of the, this grant money that does come in, uh, it's very restricted on how you spend it and where you can spend that. Um, so there's definitely criteria, especially for the state. In the federal grants, there's reports that need to be submitted at the end of each fiscal year. S R two, um, if you all recall, was part of the budget process last year. These are like the big buckets, uh, of where the funding went, uh, towards, so staff and stipends, additional staff, um, that we articulated in our previous budget proposal, contracted services, supplies, materials, uh, which included our instructional technology, assessment tools throughout the district, and then other costs, uh, a late bus, uh, for the extra support for student learning, and then a handicap accessible van, um, that we added into that S R two. As we look forward for the S R three grant funding, these are the big buckets that we added in. Part of our goal this year is to have, uh, pre-full day kindergarten as we do in our budget planning, um, and we have the ability to use of S R funding to support that initiative. We also, uh, have hired, uh, additional staff interventionists throughout the district, um, for helping with accelerated learning support, uh, additional instructional assistance, uh, throughout the district, supplies and materials, our instructional technology, continuous professional development in summer and after school learning, and then, as I said, uh, accelerated learning supports for student growth. So these are the big buckets as we're moving into this school year and beyond, um, you know, the different areas of the funding for the S R three. Um, we did a fourteen-year kind of projection on enrollments. So if you just look at that, that line, so we've been very consistent within about a hundred students, um, throughout the fourteen years, so our enrollment, uh, throughout enrollment projections is consistent, uh, throughout. And I think this, uh, biography and chart is, and you can kind of see, um, how that's kind of leveling off. School choice revenue, uh, just a breakdown over the years. Um, so you can see the school choice, uh, revenue coming into the district. Our current FY twenty-two school choice enrollment, we have sixty-seven. And then as you can see, from grade four to grade twelve, you can see the numbers of our school choice students. This is something that we're always, uh, looking at, our special education costs. Um, and as you recall, even at the state level, um, looking at funding for school districts, uh, for special education costs, transportation, uh, was a big push to get some, I think, relief for many districts, uh, to support all students. And, um, so these are some of the different costs that you've seen over the years for our tuition, our transportation, staffing, uh, and then the totals. In my next slide that I just would like to show is for an example, for our auditistic tuition rates. So these are all the, um, schools, uh, that we currently are using, and this tuition is just tuition, one child, uh, to attend at these schools for one year. Uh, so we have, throughout the district, there's thirty-five students, um, that are an outside placement, and that, this is just a tuition cost, this is not the transportation cost. This does not include, um, it, there's medical aid and nursing, uh, services that we need. Um, it wouldn't include, uh, the one-to-one, um, support that some students need, and then obviously, uh, does not include transportation from Maryport to these facilities. This also does not include, this is just the tuition for the school year and not for some of our students. It's a year-round program, so there is, uh, summer months would also be additional cost. So for us and our timeline, and, um, as always, so our October and November principals are working with their school councils, uh, developing their, um, school improvement plans, developing their needs per school. Um, then what we'll do, uh, Mr. Little Hale and myself, we'll meet with all of the budget holders in December, individual budget holders, uh, look at those requests. And then in January, we meet with our central office. Um, and then we put together a binder, uh, for everybody, and then we start having our budget deliberations as a district. So all of the budget holders within the district, this is where we, uh, work on a priority list, or we work on, uh, different needs at every building, uh, in every department. Then from there, um, February and March, we develop our preliminary budget, uh, review and overview for school committee. April is the budget, uh, public budget presentations. April and May, we continue with budget deliberations with school committee, and then the full budget to school committee, and then May, uh, I think it's May fifteenth, budget to the city.
Yeah.
Or about.
Close enough.
There you go. Um, and also, I just wanted, so that's kind of the budget overview, or kind of where we're at, and some of our costs and revenue coming in. Um, but also, we're in the process of our strategic planning, and I just want to make the city council and school committee participate in the focus groups, um. So a lot of this information, I'm not gonna get into a lot of detail, because it's part of, uh, our focus groups, and you're familiar with a lot of our, I mean, successes and, uh, strategic plan and, uh, str- strategies. So here, as we all have, uh, talked about, are the seven strategies that we're gonna continue, um, in these different areas. And we're reimagining in all of those areas, because that's something, um, that we learned through that pandemic, is having the ability to adapt, be flexible, and adjust. Some of the, uh, focus on teaching and learning for all students. As you all know, we have ongoing curriculum development and data-driven assessments that we're utilizing. We're expanding programs, our world language and special education programming throughout the district. Uh, really important to us is the development of our teacher leadership and teacher leadership capacity, along with professional development, teaching and learning with a focus, uh, through technology, our universal approaches to instruction, and development of, uh, pre-K to grade twelve of educational programming, uh, which has been a number one goal of mine for the past three years. And Nancy Koz and her special ed team continue to, um, develop programming within district. As we all know, and as part of the pandemic and reopening schools, uh, this year, there's been a real importance, emphasis on social-emotional learning for all students, um, in providing opportunities for them to continue to grow outside the classroom. So we've expanded all of our wellness, our student advisory, and school culture programs. We've increased staffing, uh, with counseling throughout every dis- every school. We developed a behavioral health coordinator, which is a new position for the district. Um, we've elevated, um, and structured student voice. We're bringing students to the table for many of our decisions. And then on, I think, a big accomplishment for the community in the past three years, um, we have our later slack times, um, at the high school and also at the middle school. Our last piece here is, uh, we're gonna continue to focus with our strategic goals. We continually examine staff guidance, operations, looking to build a sustainable, flexible, and responsible organization. Uh, we've added new positions of communications, student health, literacy, intervention. We've updated, and we continue to update our systems, and we're continuing to work on aligning, uh, special education programs, pre-K to twelve. Here are some priorities, uh, that we have as we begin this, beginning of this, uh, budget process is, as I said earlier, pre-full day kindergarten for the district, in-district programming of our S E L and special education, um, so we can, uh, educate as many students or all of our students here in Maryport, and reduce some outside district costs. Um, our college and career pathways initiative, um, has been really, um, a top priority. And at this time, we're already over eighty of our seniors that have, have, um, internships, the most we've ever had, and that's the new hire with our college and career, uh, counselor at the high school. We're also, um, gonna be working on a comprehensive one-to-one technology program at the high school, which we have planning on right now. And then very important for us is a pre-K to twelve district literacy plan with Dr. Abrams and Lisa Ippolito, our assistant superintendent, working, uh, throughout the district. On here, I did not, um, also add, but this is for the school system, um, contract year for all three unions. So that would also be cost that, as we developed, uh, our budget and projections, uh, and estimated cost for all three unions. And then the next step for us is our budget process review and our leadership team meetings will be held by the school administrators and, oh, among the, uh, I think this is yours. Unless I'm filling in, you know? So mine. So mine is, this is.
So you've already did yours.
I already did mine. I was like, oh, I get to meet with all the departments now. They really like me up here. All right, I'll hold on. Yes.
So is it all right to ask a few questions about the slides? All right. So the first one is about the full day kindergarten. So based on the slide, is it fair to say that basically the cost to do full day free kindergarten is between three and five hundred on approximately over the last several years, somewhere in there?
Correct.
Okay. But you're planning to do it, but then basically subsidize it with Escher funds to the tune of about three hundred, three fifty, leaving a gap of a hundred and fifty or so, all very rough numbers.
Correct. Yes, very rough numbers.
So that's the first question. Second one is, if we do that, is the intent that once kindergarten's free, it never goes back to being?
Correct.
Okay. So that brings my, my next question, which is especially the Escher three is, I mean, it's a very big number on the, on the other federal grants, two point one million over three years. My, my question or concern is, are we worried about a sugar high on that money? And then it runs out in three years and we, do we have staff and positions that are built on that foundation, which is, you know, shaky, right? What, what is the plan for that after that three years comes and goes?
Correct. I think for, for us and all of our planning, we fully understand that. So we're not basing, basically, we're not putting a foundation, you know, through Escher founding, you know, Escher funding, and all of a sudden that funding's removed and now we're laying people off and programming. So all of these items, we, we understand it's going to be a one-time cost. So your full day kindergarten, for us to move that to pre-full day kindergarten is really that one-time cost. Because then those numbers get added into your enrollment to the state. So they become part of the peer people expenditures. So that, that, those kindergarten, because parents are paying, are not part of our PPE, correct? So, so once we have that, that kindergarten class will then be part of our overall numbers supporting the state.
So I, I guess I don't know what that means financially. So once they become part of the per pupil?
Cost.
Does that mean we're, we're getting something that we weren't getting before from the state?
Yes.
Chapter seventy will be impacted by that.
Will go up by some.
In a positive way.
So the net cost to do it, so essentially you're using the Escher money to jumpstart the engine. And then once you got that, you're going to get some money from chapter seventy. What's the net after all that to run full day? What's, is it fifty grand, extra ten grand, is it zero?
Yeah, I think for, for us, and that's, that's part of our estimate as we develop our budget. But eventually, it's going to be a cost. It's part of the operational budget, but it's not going to be a significant. Like every year, we need three hundred thousand dollars for kindergarten. So it's, yeah.
So you don't actually really have to find that money per se?
No.
Because you have Eschers, you can use that to get the gap filled in. Okay, I understand. Second question is on the school choice, which comes up all the time. Do we look at school choice as being profitable? Or do we look at it as being a good cash flow tool to help get, get cash into the district? Because the question you get often, or I get often, is you have a per pupil expenditure, you can look it up from Desi, it's whatever it is, fifteen, seventeen thousand dollars, but you only get five grand.
Correct.
So that, that, as a very simple thing, looks like a negative twelve thousand dollar profit, right, which is bad. So is it, is it better than that and it's just a cash flow thing? Or is it, you know, or is it something else that we're missing?
Sean, can I take a whack at it?
Yes.
The issue is you can't compare average student cost as a basis of whether they make any money or not. What you have basically, you have a fixed amount of seats that we have available. And if I've got an empty seat in a classroom, the question is, what are the incremental costs to fill that seat? And that's why it's only five thousand dollars. Because if I bring a student from outside the district, it's not a fifteen thousand dollar price tag. It's what are the incremental costs? Well, I've already got a teacher, I've already got the heat, I've already got the building, so we're talking tools. Now the question goes up, well, what if the student has special ed needs? Those get charged back to the sending district and that gets included in the choice revenue that we bring in. So in essence, you're filling empty slots and getting five thousand dollars. So are you making money? It's, it's a cash flow positive any way you look at it.
Okay. Yeah, that's, that's kind of what I was, was wondering about the cash flow aspect.
Because if it wasn't, we wouldn't be doing it. No district would be doing it.
The last question I had is, is there, is, how has the district changed in terms of employee count over the last ten years? Is the, is the school district twice as many employees as it was ten years ago? Is it the same as it was ten years ago? Is it less? I'm just, I, I don't really have a good, I don't have a good sense of that. And I was curious if you could.
I mean, I think it's, I'm going to assume, I mean, having gone back ten years and look at our staffing patterns. I mean, that's something that we can do, but I'm going to, because of, I think, the challenges of, you know, within education, a lot of the mandates, and some of them are unfunded mandates, that if we are required, we are adding. This, in my mind, is we are adding more staff because of the, I think, the needs of the kids today. So the challenges ten years ago within schools, they're, I think they're more significant and different than they are, you know, than they are today.
Yeah, it's not meant to be a judgment. I'm just, it's curious to see the, the enrollment essentially plus or minus a hundred, which is essentially flat. I'm just curious to see what the curve is on employees, to see the, the sort of faculty, staff, administrator ratio to students over a long period of time.
Well, and I think that the other piece is, and this is when we're working with, with people. So it's, I think every year, your student population can, can change in the sense of the challenges that they may be dealing with. So you, you may have, you know, two thousand, twenty-three hundred students. So you have all your resources in place for this year, and then all of a sudden those same twenty-three hundred students come back. But there are certain challenges you may have. They, you know, they could be diagnosed with learning disabilities. There could be some severe, you know, mental illness that has gone on, you know, within that year. So for us, and going back to, you know, mandates, and obviously we want to educate all of our students, we may be hiring more staff to address student needs. So it's not like a constant, it's always changing. Is, and so, for example, social-emotional learning, ten years ago, you weren't, we weren't talking about mental illness and social-emotional learning ten years ago. The last, you know, because of the challenges, I think, you know, within society and whatever's going on in society trickles down into the schools. We're seeing a much higher increase of anxiety and depression among children. And the schools, we have to address those issues. So I, you know, just being in education my entire life, you know, ten, twelve years ago, we didn't see the rates of anxiety and depression among kids like we see today. So when we're looking at adjustment councils in every building and behavioral health coordinator, those are added positions to address the needs of, of the kids.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sean, I just wanted to ask a follow-up on the kindergarten. Do we have a census of the number of children in Newburyport who would potentially be going into kindergarten? Do we have a sense of that number? And when you all of a sudden, parents are paying for kindergarten or paying for programs elsewhere, is there a chance we could all of a sudden see?
All of those students back.
That, all of a sudden, all the students all coming back? And do we have enough space and we have to take them?
Correct.
Because they're residents of Newburyport. So have we figured out those particular pieces?
We're looking at those numbers, but that's why we feel.
That we can do this?
Correct.
Okay, great.
Yes.
Actually, I have a related question to that, to Phil's point. Do you have some sense of what the capacity is in the school system in each grade for additional children for school choice? Because it, it, like, for right now, you could have that, and let's say it's, it's ten in ninth grade. You could plan a little bit in the future and say, you know, obviously you'd have to wait until sometime during the summer to, to, you know, fully, there'd be some timing issues there. But, but, you know, if you have an average of three new kids moving in every summer, you know, then you could have a seven capacity, you could, you could allow some more people in. Because I've just had people notice that, that the, the choice revenue has gone down over the years. It has been a discussion since the six years that I've been on the council and was on joint ed. So is, is that, do we have that capacity as well?
Well, part of the process is the school committee every year has to vote whether or not we participate in school choice. And the district does its analysis to come to the committee to say, here's what we have available by grade. So that we can go up and tell the other district, here's what's available.
It shifts year by year as well. You know, you've got a棒子class that moves up and suddenly you've got seats that you've been providing. The third grade, now you have extra seats. So we, on an annual basis, approve it and then we take a recommendation from the district as to how many.
I have one more question.
Sean.
It has been a discussion on the in-district programming since you first got on with at least me on joint ed and in the, in these. So your goal was to bring, bring more of that in-house.
Correct.
And if I'm looking at slide twenty-six, I don't quite remember when you got here, but the first two or three years, we've got, you know, almost five hundred thousand dollars rate, you know, going up. And then the next one, we've got almost four hundred and fifty thousand dollars going up. And then sometime around that time is when you came in and we have a hundred and fifty, two fifty, and a hundred. So would you say that, that your focus on this has had a positive effect? And what, what's, what's your goal in that regard in terms of maybe this chart? What, what's this chart going to look like at the end of your next five-year, you know, contract?
Yeah, I, I think, yeah, one hundred percent, I think, there's a, it's a, it's a very long, I could give you a long answer, but the short of it is, we're working on that district literacy plan. When you're looking at students that, many students that may have disabilities, it usually starts with, you know, reading issues at the early age. And assistant superintendent Eppolito with our literacy plan and a real focus on elementary literacy right now is paying off, just in our short term, is paying off dividends. The assessment, so dyslexia and a lot of the assessments that we're utilizing now, we can identify potential reading problems in the future. So I think that's number one that we're doing. The second piece that we're doing with Nancy Quatch's team is we've been reorganizing our special education staffing. Instead of being more, I would say, reactive to a need, we're developing, we're taking our staff and developing programming similar to some of the programs that you may see here. Like, for example, Landmark is a big program for students with reading disabilities. But we have through Nancy with Horton-Gillingham Training, we've brought in a landmark expert analyzing our reading programs, giving us feedback. So our goal, I, I think it's twofold. If you're a Newburyport family and your child has needs services, all families want to stay in their community. You know, there are some situations where an outside placement is going to be beneficial for the family and the student. But our goal is to really develop the programming so our Newburyport students can stay in Newburyport and the families can stay in Newburyport. And then develop similar programs that you see on this list. So we can have the in-house programming where parents feel very comfortable and they see their students having success so they don't need to go to another facility. So that's been, I think, the work for Nancy Quatch and now Lisa Eppolito. It's a collective effort. The second piece, remember, going back to the social-emotional learning piece, by having the adjustment councils and our behavioral health coordinator that's overseeing pre-K to twelve, social-emotional programming. So a lot of those students that may be suffering from school phobia, anxiety, depression, we're developing programming at each building to address those needs for those students.
So, so these graphs, you'll, these, you'll, you would expect them to stay, level, level out or even drop?
Correct.
Okay, great.
And, and the other goal for us is to establish, the other piece that we're looking at is once we establish an exemplary program, so let's say we have, let's say a elementary school reading program for students that have reading disabilities, that's exemplary, then we can offer that.
But that's a school choice.
But it would be, it would be under the special education costs.
Oh, great.
So if we could develop our own program, we're not going to service our students, but open it up by the districts, then that's kind of about the, the big picture goal.
Great. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Yes.
So as we're talking about going back to the strategic plan, and I know you've been doing all the focus groups, and as you're kind of starting the budget process in terms of meeting with all the, the teams and to come up with that, how are your findings from the strategic plan, focus group efforts and those seven kind of strategic efforts? How is that going to inform considerations for the budget in fiscal year twenty-three as well as projecting for the next few years, given what you're learning and what, you know, looking at slides thirty-one and thirty-three, where you talk a little bit about, I think it's like thirty-one went through, yeah. Yeah, so you talked about the priorities, but as you're doing this effort, do you see that there's going to be some concerted efforts in trying to put some dollar amounts or some budget?
Correct. I think that's, right, and that's, I think, as part of the, the older strategic plan, I think there was, I think the action steps, you know, were articulated with the strategies. But I think one of the pieces for the city council and also school committee was, there, there was no dollar amount on that. So you have a five-year plan, how much is this going to cost? So working with Mr. Little Hale, who's done strategic planning, but is also, has the ability to kind of estimate what these costs are going to look like down the line, that's going to be, I think, a difference for people because we'll see the cost that is associated with that.
And that's going to happen early? Just, I, I do have your timeline.
Correct.
So by the end of this year, do you think?
Yeah, so our goal right now is to finish the focus groups in November. We work with the educators, we begin to write the new plan. And then with the goal of presenting the new plan in January and February. But the reason why we want to stay focused on some of these big ticket items is I didn't want, you know, the city council or school committee, oh, well, there's no, we don't have any aspirations when we're writing the new plan. So this work is still being considered because this is some of the, I think, themes that came out of the old strategic plan. I mean, when I first came here and I did my entry plan, I met with many, many people about pre-full day kindergarten. You know, people wanted, obviously, the late stack was a big concern. So college and career readiness, dual enrollment, so a lot of these initiatives we've already have been moving towards. But when we have the strategic plan, the new one, there will be some funding estimates associated with those.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Yes.
Sean, going back to the tuition, to the outplacements, can you speak a little bit to the impact of costs of those things over the last several years? I understand that it's very significant increases in tuition costs.
Yeah, and I think the other thing for the city council should also, in school committee, is every year that, this is the one-year tuition. But the other piece to this is every year, all of these outside placements, they go up three percent. So that tuition that you see there will, for next year, is going to be estimated another increase of a three percent. So I think this cost, the transportation costs associated with that, you know, as I was saying, the transportation costs, it could be medical needs, one-to-one, all of those costs that districts incur along with the yearly tuition. So as part of, yep, and I just want to say, as part of when, before the pandemic, there was a lot of movement for the restructuring of chapter seventy. There was a lot of discussion on the formulas for charter school. But superintendents in, in our area, we were looking at if we could get some relief of special education costs, this would help every, this is one common theme. So there's a lot of discussions between urban challenges and our challenges. So we had a lot of discussions, but every superintendent in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the one common denominator is if we could have assistance through the state around special education. Because every district, the special education costs are very challenging. For us, as Council Devlin said, we've been really focused on addressing our needs within Newburyport. And I think we have a pretty good plan. But overall, transportation costs for school districts and special education costs for school districts in the Commonwealth is, it's really challenging.
And I was just going to say, Paul, with transportation, transportation this year has been extremely, extremely challenging. And Nancy will tell you that, that they are constantly trying to get transportation arranged. And the more we can bring those students back in, the less we have to worry about the transportation issue as well. But as you know, trying to find drivers or buses these days is extremely difficult. But as you know, trying to find drivers or buses these days is extremely difficult and gets more expensive by the day.
Can I ask a follow-up just on this, just to put a sharper point on Council Devlin's question? If you're at ten point nine million in total special ed costs for FY twenty-two, what, is there a reasonable number? One, you know, are you talking about shaving a million off of this, three million off of this, over a five to ten-year period? What is a reason, like, you, you?
I think so, so if you, like, some of these, so some of these programs, there's certain, you know, for example, and, and we use Landmark, and Landmark's a, a great, um, facility and it's a great school and, uh, students out of there are doing, are doing well, so we're, we're very happy for them. But if we're looking at a district, so if this is a sixty thousand dollar tuition for one student, and we have, say, I'm gonna, I'm gonna pull a number up there, let's say there's twelve students right now there, that's a significant cost. So for us, as we're looking at some of these, uh, different areas and, and what they specialize in, for example, reading and literacy is something we feel we can duplicate a program like that, uh, and keep our students in-house. So when we look at the outside placement, there are some of those, um, there are some of those programs that we feel that we have the staffing and the expertise and we just need a little more training, um, to kind of mimic some of those programs. Um, like a solstice is, um, um, a program for students with high anxiety and depression that, you know, for example, a school phobic who may not be able to operate within the public schools. Well, that's another focus. If we can create a therapeutic program, which we've piloted up at the high school with some success, but we can do something like that district-wide, then that, you know, one tuition of eighty thousand, if you bring, say, five or six students back, that's kind of what our focus is. Um, so the more students that we can create programming within our school system, it, I think it's better, number one, for the students and the families, cause they stay here, they're part of our community and they don't have to go anywhere. And number two, it also saves some costs, so I think it's a win-win for everybody. So that's our goal, so if we can, so that's not like a ten-year, like in ten years, we're gonna reduce this. This is what we're working on now, because if we can develop some of this in-house programming similar to some of these out-of-district programming, then we can bring those students back next year. So we could almost, uh, drop those costs immediately. It just takes a little bit of time and some, and some more training, yes?
And that can affect your in-house specialized, your tier-two and your tier-three kids. Once you get that just for literacy, you know, plan going, I mean, that can really change staffing and.
One hundred percent, right? I mean, I think that's like the, the big statistic, you know, the whole goal is, you know, for students to be reading at grade level by grade three. Um, you know, when we used to do, you know, dropout rates and all of that, that's the number one dropout, uh, rate. Is it number one cause if they're not reading at grade level.
Direct.
Number one indicator, yeah. So that's why I think literacy is so important, especially in elementary level. Yes?
Sean, um, with some of these difficult, uh, out-of-district placements, uh, kids bring lots of problems with them. Uh, to what extent do we work with families to access their private insurance to pay for some of the services that are not education-related, that are more medical-related? So that the money's coming out of the right bucket?
Mm-hmm, so we, we get, we do get reimbursement for like Medicaid and, uh, some insurance, um, that the families may have. Um, but we also have to, we also have to pay, um, for insurance too. So what we, what we do for, for every student, um, as part of the circuit breakup, we tally up our costs as much as we can, um, for the circuit breakup reimbursement, which is usually between seventy and seventy-five percent of the specialty costs. But we work with families, uh, on insurance. Um, and it's really a partnership, it's not, you know, some, some students do need, um, an, an out-of-district placement because they have needs that we can't service within the public school. So I think it's, you know, in, in those circumstances, absolutely. But I think for, for our teachers, um, and some of the professionals that we have, um, I think many of the families would like to have programming within districts so they don't have to go out of district. Yes?
So do you, with the interruption to last year's school year and learning and everything else, do you see this number going up exponentially this year? Because what's the gauge to say what happened with kids' mental health?
Right.
So you could have a whole lot of students opt out because of societal issues.
Correct, and I think one of the, I think one of the benefits, um, for us in, in having some new team members here is, uh, we do a bold, kind of a academic assessment as the students are coming back. Um, and we're talking about accelerated learning, so a lot of, you know, um, there's a lot of generalization, like, you know, the learning gaps are so significant, students lost a whole year of education. We're not seeing that. On the flip side, we're also assessing, uh, mental health, uh, with all of our students. So when we do have students that may be struggling, um, we provide a lot of accommodations to, to keep them, you know, in district. There are some students, for example, um, that may need an abbreviated schedule as they first came back. So they weren't here a full day, they were here half a day, and then we gradually got into that full day. So there's a lot of work that goes on, work with individual families. But it's something that we one hundred percent, um, of, of, we monitor that on a daily basis. And I think, just wanna credit our adjustment counselors, um, by adding more mental health services and bringing more staff in, um, I think it's also been, um, beneficial for Newbury Board because we're sparring a lot of these early enough where we can provide interventions before it becomes a school phobic, uh, situation where they have to go out of district. So it's a great question. Yes?
Just a quick question, can you tell me the, uh, fund balance of the choice account as of the end of this, uh, school year?
I'll pass that on to Mr. Little Hale.
You have to give me a moment to look it up.
He has a computer there, so.
We want another question while I open my files.
While he's looking that up, if you could go to the, uh, the ESER three slide? And I, I know most of the people here already know this, but I don't. So first of all, this has to last you for three years. Obviously, you're not gonna spend it all at once, but you're also probably not gonna, you know, divide it equal thirds, right? Is that why it's aggregated? Okay. And then the thing I would ask is just, you know, for a layperson, uh, the difference between an interventionist and an accelerated learning support, I just really wanna understand each job.
Yeah, so, so a, interventionist is very, like, specific. So, uh, for literacy and for math, um, you have, and for science. So you have specific intervention in the sense of, uh, students struggling in class, small group.
Could be any grade?
Correct, so we have those interventionists at each, within, yes. So, and within each building, so let's say through the assessment data that we're analyzing, let's say we're doing a, a math assessment, and there's a group of students, um, say it's on numbers, you know, struggled with that or didn't score, that's where the interventionist.
Got it, that one I got.
Okay, and, uh, accelerated learning support, so that's really like tied into, like, um, so this would be accelerated learning support would be type of, um, like, learning loss in the sense of, um, if someone was, was not on a grade level, so it's more of a, um, it wouldn't be small group, but it would be more, um, I guess, what's the word I'm looking for? Independent intervention for students, that it's a little bit more significant. Um, the programming, so this would also incorporate, um, like, programming and technology to support, uh, individual students. So really an interventionist, uh, working with groups of students, and then your accelerated learning supports, uh, a different, um, like, programming and people to address, address that.
Thank you.
And these, um, these are, these are big buckets, um, so over the three-year period, uh, we do have the ability to modify. So all of a sudden, for example, if we, we put in two hundred and fifty-one thousand for accelerated learning supports, by the end of this year, let's say we recognize, you know, we're in pretty good, you know, in this area and this bucket, we're pretty good, but you know what, we wanna spend more time on the summer and, or we wanna spend more money on summer and after-school learning. Um, so we do have the ability to work within the ESER, um, to, you know, modify that, but we have to get approval by the state to kind of move those, that money around.
Got it.
The answer?
Yes.
One point five-four million, thank you.
Um, can you talk about, um, just briefly, the, the kind of learning that takes place during the summer and after-school? I know that we're required by law to provide special needs program during the summer. Are you talking about additional kinds of?
Correct, so it's like the, the literacy camps, the STEM camps. Uh, as we're moving into this summer, we're looking for advanced learning opportunities for students. So it's not just, you know, a learning loss, um, it's really for students to, to do a little bit extra. So there's a lot of plans as part of that, um, yeah.
I'm glad to hear that, it's been a very long time since we've done a summer enrichment-type program.
Yeah, it's really, it's, it has both, it's the, the learning loss, but really focused on enrichment, um, where students are really engaging, you know.
Wasn't the ELL program too part of that?
Correct, ELL.
Which was very successful.
Correct. Yes?
I just, I'm, I, I, it's so, it's always very interesting to hear, I just wanna kind of follow up on a question Counselor Con asked. So what I'm lacking is, this is a budget hearing or budget forum, how I'm tying all these pieces together. So Ethan says, I'm carrying you at three and a half percent, you know, basically you're trending with growth. It's a big contract year, all three unions, all three schools, big deal. So when I hear three and a half, I don't hear anything new, that's how I look at things, is, you know, you're sort of at the level mark. Level services, not level budget, we understand the difference. I see a, and a very cogent argument to invest in spec, special education. I mean, you have to train, you have to spend money to make money, right? You have to spend and invest to get something. But I, what I'm not connecting is how do all these pieces now fit together so that I understand how much money more you need to make furtherance on the goals? The, the only answer I've seen so far that I understand is ESER, but that's a short term, and so you're trying to put it into these things, which I think the theory is, is that after a few years, this is to help bolster from COVID-related impacts. And the theory is the interventionist will dwindle their need as COVID effects are muted over a period of three years, which remains to be seen if that's actually true. It could be that you need the interventionist even longer, and that's where I'm worried. But I guess what I'm not connecting is now taking Ethan's presentation, your presentation, and saying, all right, now I understand what the superintendent wants, I understand what Ethan's projecting, I have a sense for where the box is. I don't know, and that's maybe where Counselor Con's question is valuable, is that's the strategic plan, I think, fits in the middle there. But that's that push we've been having to say, okay, now show me the money. Show me that we need to invest five hundred in special ed training in order to save a million or to have a better program, because it doesn't always have to save money, right? But that's what I'm missing, I don't, I don't know how to reconcile those two things.
I think they need time, because they're just getting the information from the focus groups, the new plan is coming to place. They're meeting with the school councils, you know, I think you'd probably have a lot more information if we did this meeting in February as opposed to November, because they've just beginning the process, counselor. But I think you'll find that, that, you know, as you have seen over the last several years that the superintendent has been with us, he clearly has identified, you know, the first tier, second tier, third tier priorities, and we were able to fund all of them last year. So I think you'll see that going forward.
So when, when we do our, when we start, we begin our budget deliberation, especially for the, the building principals at the building level, and then along with, uh, budget holders like Steve Ferkholm and, um, and people like that, and food service. So there are original, uh, their original requests, uh, we meet with them individually. So we don't hold them to a three-point-five percent increase. So whatever they need at the building level and whatever they need at the, uh, the budget operation level, budget holders, that's, that's in the original, um, budget proposal. And then what we do as a district is, so we don't cut any of that. So what we do is we prioritize as a district, so for example, the example I, I would give, if, if Mr. Wolf, you know, needed, um, let's say he wanted to run elective history, so his, one of his priorities might be at the high school level, uh, an additional history teacher. Um, but at the Knox Middle School, they talk, you know, as we all deliberate and talk, they need an adjustment council because there's, you know, seeing a significant, uh, increase, uh, students with anxiety. So during our budget deliberations, Mr. Wolf might say, you know what? That's more of a priority than an additional history teacher right now, so I'll move my history to a priority two. But the budget that, when we start the budget process, all of the asked and all the requests are in there. And then what we've done over the years is just developed kind of a priority list of these are priorities we absolutely need. Here's like a priority two, and then you know what, if, if there's not enough money or something happens at three, we can hold that off, uh, till the following year. So we don't, when we start our budget process, I don't hold our, our principals and our, um, budget holders to a certain percentage. They, they put everything in and then we just kind of work through it over a couple months till we get that list. Yes?
One of the things that I, I would say, and I mentioned it a number of times, that is really, that is really a question is, um, as a superintendent, as a district, we really take a serious look about whether our programs are effective. And if they're not effective, um, you're pretty willing to reallocate the funds that we already have to address the needs that we see. So it isn't, it doesn't always mean that we're coming to you for more staff. We can handle some of these things by simply reallocating money in our own budget.
Yeah, and I think, I think we do, uh, you know, I think we're, you know, pretty, I mean, we do a lot of self-reflection and as a superintendent, I'm pretty out of myself. But if we do have programs or staffing patterns that we feel like we can reallocate, um, we, I think we've done that in the past. There are, as, as you said, Council D. There is, sometimes there's a priority for this year, you know, for, say, interventionist, and then all of a sudden, um, you know, we may have a better idea on how to utilize, you know, that position where maybe the classroom teacher through more training can actually provide those services. So that's how we, when we go through our budget, we look at our existing budget, our existing programs, and we really see if we can do things better. So there's been a few times, um, that within the reallocation of our operational budget, um, we've created programs without asking for additional money. So I think that that's always ongoing process that, that we do. Yes?
I, I just, I, just to kind of wrap this up, so I think a lot of things are in our minds as the counselors and maybe the school committees. You know, we know that there is a, a possible, um, you know, expenditure for the science labs at the high school. Let's give that as an example. We know we have this five-year strategic plan and that there will be some financial or some goals tied to it. And I think what would be helpful is after this effort is done, I think it'd be maybe coming back in here with like a presentation of what that five years looks like, so we can understand the bigger picture from the operating side, but also the capital side. And I think that would be some value, because there is a lot of good information being gleaned by what you're doing. And I think having that roadmap is, I think what I've always kind of, maybe we could strategize and think about and hear and get that presentation. So just something to maybe suggest for next year with your findings and taking it to another level of just our understanding too.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, and on that note, I think we've, um, pretty much covered, uh, uh, where we are with the schools and our city moving forward. And just please keep in mind that even though we give, uh, three-point-five percent as a, uh, starting number to the schools, I don't hope you've ever stuck to the, it's just a starting point, so just please keep that in mind. Anyway, um, thank you all for coming, appreciate all of your questions or input, and thank you, you know, Ethan and Superintendent Galvin. I appreciate all your efforts to put the presentations together and do it. Thank you.
Thank you.